It'll change from High School Site to Employment Park. And there are changes associated with this amendment to the text of the specific plan, as well as to the map. And they are just there to maintain consistency. Now, with respect to the Canayo Center Drive property, all of these sites, including this one, are vacant properties. This was at one time planned as the preferred location to relocate the school district's warehouse, maintenance, and operations yard. And the school district has declared this property to be surplus. And it's pending sale at this moment. And this change to industrial is needed to allow for future industrial development of the property. This is an aerial photo of the Canayo Center Drive site. And these are some site photos, or taken from the ground and from various directions. And you can see that the site supports a small amount of vegetation. It was rough graded years ago, and from time to time, it's disced for weed control. Now, this just depicts that location on the general plan map again. And this depicts the specific plan change from city property to employment park. There's the site, another site that's owned by the city at 1205 Lawrence Drive. And it's immediately south of the site we just discussed. And the city has declared this property to be surplus. But it does require a change to industrial to allow for a range of future uses. Currently, it's just city property, and there's not too much that could be used for. This is an aerial view of the property. And it's apparent from this view that this is a very irregular, the shape of this site is quite irregular. And these are some site photos. And what's apparent from this photo is that there's a set of power lines that reaches the substation, which is adjacent to this property. And that impairs the future use of this property. It limits it. Again, this is just a general plan map showing the site currently institutional and proposed to be changed for industrial. One thing this shows for all of these sites is the majority of the property in this area is already designated for industrial uses. So it's, these changes are compatible with the surrounding land uses. The third property is also a vacant site at the western terminus of Rancho Canayo Boulevard. And this one happens to be owned by Chappelle Industries. It was planned years ago for a future relocation of Canayo Valley High School. That's the continuation high school on Newberry Road today. But the school district determined that they were not interested in relocating the high school there ultimately. And in 2007, approximately, the site was transferred to Chappelle Industries as part of a land swap that involved the city. And as part of that land swap, the city obtained property that has been used to expand the municipal service center. So in a sense, this is, this change occurred some time ago, and this is a housekeeping change. This is an aerial view of the site. And this is some photos from a couple of directions. The photos at the top kind of depict a view looking to the east, and you're looking at the municipal service center to the right there. This depicts the general plan land use element map again. And this shows the proposed change to the specific plan designation from High School Site to Employment Park. So in conclusion, I'd like to point out that these changes are consistent with the Thousand Oaks general plan, and specifically, these two policies are particularly relevant. One says that industrial development should occur in the Rancho Canayo industrial area. That's what this property is. And that employment centers that will provide industrial and commercial employment shall be encouraged. And so in making this change, you'll be encouraging industrial and commercial employment. So staff is recommending that the commission recommend that the city council adopt and approve the negative declaration, the amendments to the land use element, and the specific plan as well, specific plan number seven. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Specter. Commissioners, any questions for Commissioner Reynolds?
Good evening. I was just curious, years ago, we approved a spot out in this area for an apartment. Is it close to this property? Do you know what I'm talking about? It was...
Do you mean, I'm going to go back to a map here. Here's a map.
I didn't know if it was adjoining the property on Canayo Center Drive. It's been many, many years.
Well, just a few years ago, probably 2008...
And then we changed.
Yeah, there've been a couple of changes. You can see on the, sort of the middle site, the one, the larger site on Canayo Center Drive, there's an industrial area. That was recently re-designated, industrial from city property. We'd entertained at one time to change that to allow residential, but that never was finalized. However, you can see the high density, the brown there. Those two sites were designated probably 2008 or so. They're vacant to this day.
And that's what it was. It was money that the developers had put into to build low-income housing type of thing. And I know I was upset that there aren't any city services out there.
Yeah, yeah. The, that one that's just to the west of the Canayo Center Drive property, that was the site that was involved with the meta-housing and operating engineers for affordable housing. The other sites where it says high density, those were changed to meet a state requirement for high-density housing called the RENA, Regional Housing Needs Assessment. That's the history.
Thank you. I just didn't know what was contiguous, you know, with the properties. Thank you.
Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, and good evening.
Evening.
Just to sound clear on the ownership, the first lot is in escrow now to Gem Street?
Well, last I heard, I don't know if it's still in escrow. We do have folks that are involved in that transaction here, and maybe they can give us an update tonight.
All right. The second lot is still city property, the one on Lawrence?
Yes, the irregular-shaped property with the power lines running through it is city property.
All right. And the third is private property of Chappelle?
Yes.
Right, okay. And maybe I'll, I do have one question about the one in escrow, but maybe I'll hold that for the folks there. With regard to the industrial designation, what is the maximum height of a building that would be put on any of these, any of these lots?
Well, maybe John Shepherd might know if it's 25 or 35 feet in this area.
Yeah, actually, the municipal code in the M1 zone is a 35-foot height limit.
Okay. And is that a maximum limit or an average limit, or?
Typically, it ends up as far as more of an average across the property on that to get articulation of the building design versus just a box envelope effect.
All right. But if some developer came along and wanted to put up a 10-story building, they wouldn't be able to do that, correct?
That would be difficult to get, yes.
All right. And then my final question, and for either of you, I guess, is if there have been any recent studies about industrial occupation rates in this area for industrials-owned areas? I'm a little bit concerned with current occupation there and looking at expansion of this.
You mean occupancy?
I'm sorry, occupancy, yes. I do mean that.
Well, we, those people that have been involved in, who are interested in purchasing the property, would probably be more up on the current numbers. I know a couple of years ago, the vacancy were higher than they are today. And I've heard numbers thrown around, and, you know, it's not scientific, as low as 5% for certain types of industrial properties. But I've seen higher numbers as well. But those people that are in the development business should be able to shed better light on that than I can.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Specter, I have a few questions and a clarification as well. I noticed for land use 2014-753, under the findings, there's really just two findings. One is referring to consistency with industrial land uses, and the other is regarding the negative declaration. Is there any type of requirement, or I guess maybe general rule of thumb that the city follows, is a minimum number of findings? I know typically, we see about three or four findings, and it's really just aside from the environmental, just one. Is there any requirement to have a certain number of findings?
No, there's not. This is for the general plan amendment part of it?
The land use?
Yeah, the land use part. No, it's just internal consistency for the land use and then the environmental finding. The other, you know, entitlements, whether it be, we don't have them in this case, like conditional use permits or special use permits, have more findings. And in this case, special use permit, I mean, the specific plan amendment might have more, but our code doesn't require more than that. And there's no legal requirement. It's a legal requirement that the change, that there be internal consistency. But, you know, so if you change one part of the general plan, it can't conflict with another. So there's a finding of consistency there. But that's the only thing.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that because, as I mentioned, typically, as you're correct, with mostly entitlements, we usually see three or four findings.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we're not shortchanging something here. Okay, thank you. And then, kind of follow-up to Mr. Newman's question regarding Site 3. I was a little bit confused on page 3 of the report. Wait a minute, am I getting the right? No, it wasn't page 3. Oh, I'm sorry, it was Site 3. On page 7, is the, who actually had, either did or had or does own it now? I was referring to the city had acquired the parcel with Chappelle, and that it was transferred back to Chappelle. But then there's reference to the school district. So did the school district ever own this?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So went from the city to the school district and then to Chappelle?
Well, probably Chappelle to the school district to the city, and then to Chappelle.
Okay, so it's even worse than I thought, okay.
I think it was something like that. It was very confusing.
Okay. But as of this moment, Chappelle is still the owner?
Is now the owner, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And then on page 18 of the exhibits, this is regarding, let's see, Planning Unit U under E7, it refers to day nurseries. Is there a definition of day, are we talking about nurseries for daycare for small children?
I believe so, but I haven't looked at this in so long. I'd have to ponder it a while, but I think so.
Okay. Because that's the only thing I could come up with. It seems a little bit vague.
Yeah. Should say daycare facilities.
Okay.
But this is something that was done 25 years ago, or quite a long time ago.
Okay, all right. But it's not referring to plant nurseries, for example?
I don't think so.
Okay. And then also on page 32 of the exhibit, looking at, under Parks E2C, and it's referring to, there's this whole paragraph regarding Planning Unit F, if it were to be used as a relocation site for Canayo Valley High School. Is there any relationship or implications with what we're looking at tonight regarding this paragraph here?
What part of the page is it on?
It's at the very bottom of the page. It's page 32, and the, it's Item C says 2.5 acres if Planning Unit F is used as a relocation site.
I can't, I don't have a copy of the map that shows where Planning Unit F was at the time. I'm trying to decipher that from the context. I could tell that Planning Unit F was eventually designated as residential property, and all of the residential properties, other than that newly modified properties, have been developed, so.
So this has subsequently been changed from this document, then?
Well, F was probably still there, but it's not used for the high school site.
Okay, so there's no implications then from what we're looking at tonight? I was just thinking there's, because they're both referring to school sites.
True.
Okay, so it's not an issue, then?
Not an issue.
Okay, all right. And following up, page 36 of Exhibit B, Roman numeral 6, under grading and site design A4, there's a paragraph there that starts off, grading plans shall accompany all applications for development. And the balances of paragraph has been stricken. Can you explain why that's been stricken?
Absolutely. A number of years ago, I think it was maybe, I have it in my packet here, maybe 2007 or something like that, there was a change to municipal code. There used to be a prohibit grading prior to recordation. And it was changed to allow grading prior to recordation. And matter of fact, the planning commission made a number of findings that allowed that to occur. And Public Works was the champion of that change. And what we're talking about is rough grading prior to recordation. And that's usually the best way to deal with it. So we're just making, removing what would have been an inconsistency between this language and the municipal code. So we apply the same rules uniformly throughout the city with respect to this issue.
Okay. So this is, again, more of a housekeeping issue to make sure the specific plan is consistent with municipal code, then?
Yeah, someone from Public Works pointed it out to me and said, you should have changed that with the last amendment, because we can't have this. I said, oops, okay, if I get a chance to change it again, I'll change it. But I should have made reference in the report, I think.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure we capture that. And then last was just an observation while on-site there Saturday. Seems like a favorite location for off-road vehicle use when the rains come. And there's ruts everywhere and mud scattered all over the street. Is there some opportunity to restrict access in that area with fencing or something so this doesn't become a playground? Looks like a lot of four-wheel drivers have been out in that area. I know it's not related to this case, but something to consider. Maybe we can ask Mr. Shepherd to pass that along somehow and take whatever reaction would be appropriate there. That was just an observation. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. We're not going to go to our applicants, and we've actually got a couple of applicants. I'd like to give them all their time. So if we could have Dr. John Sands from the school district, and John Freeman, if you'd like to speak individually, collectively, I'm going to leave it to all of you, because you're all applicants, whatever your preference is. Okay, and just for the record, your name and your city of residence?
I'm Joel Kirchenstein. I've filled out a card.
Yes, I have that here, Joel. Thank you very much.
The city of Thousand Oaks. I'm here on behalf of the Canayo Valley Unified School District, and I've represented their asset management plan for approximately 10 years now. And the district is here this evening as a co-applicant for the item that you have before you. So we're here to let the commission know that we're in support. The district is in full support of this item before the commission this evening. Again, we commenced a process approximately 10 years ago, and this is now the third property that's in the surplus property disposition phase. The next one to come before you will be the Kelly Road site. And that's, it's my understanding from staff, that'll be sometime in, I believe, January or February, that that'll come before you, which will complete a lot of the asset management and maybe one or two other sites. The proceeds, we also wanted to note so that the commission knows, the proceeds from this site will go for the relocation of the maintenance and operation facilities. The proceeds from Kelly Road will be used, again, plus or minus, for the relocation of the high school. So, and that's in escrow. So both properties that the district needs to move forward on those relocations are in escrow now. And we certainly appreciate the work that we've had with staff and everyone else over the years to make this happen. There've been issues from time to time, but I think we're getting very, very close. And we're working, we're having discussions with Chappelle right now for potentially one of their properties to relocate the maintenance, the M&amp;O facility up into one of the Chappelle properties. It's ironic that that's on the agenda this evening, which is what we, the transaction we entered into with them several years ago. So again, with that, unless you have any questions, I know Dr. Sands, who's the new chief operating officer for the district and assistant superintendent of business services, is also here to make a few comments.
Commissioners, do we have any questions for our speaker at this time? Commissioner Newman?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Kirchenstein. Just one question, just to get this on the record. What was the sale price for the first lot, the one that's in escrow?
The one that's for this evening, the one that you have before you this evening?
Yes.
It was, I believe it was about 3.1, about 3.1 million.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
No further questions.
Commissioner Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One more question before we let you have a seat there. With, since you mentioned you're involved with asset management, with having the accessibility to these sites and yet obviously choosing to construct elsewhere, I've read the newspaper, heard other comments, trying to find perhaps existing buildings where you don't have to do a complete build-out. Is that the intent, or are you actually just determined that these sites were just not the right design, shape, location? Just curious as to what the thought process was to not use these and instead look elsewhere?
The site, not necessarily, well, the location up in that area for a centrally-located high school, the original, did not, there was concerns that the district had for that kind of a location going up into what eventually became an industrial area for the high school. So the district's intent now is to construct the high school on existing district property near the district office. It's a small high school. So we're, you know, we're talking about two, maybe 250 students, maybe 300 on the outside sometime in the future. So the district had the land to do that in a much more centrally-located situation. The site that you're currently looking at this evening, because of the number of vehicles that the district has, looked at this site and said it would be very difficult for them to access vehicles up and down that slope, to go up and down that slope on a regular basis, day in and day out. So the site didn't have that kind of attraction to the district, although there may be some opportunities, again, in the general area, to find a site that is, that does have a different type of a configuration. And that's what we're looking at now. So that's the background of that.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much.
Okay.
Any other questions for our speaker before I let him go? Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it. John Freeman, if you'd like to come on up? That's fine.
Another John. Chairman Groundtree, commissioners and city staff, I am John Sands.
Thank you. City of Thousand Oaks.
Pardon?
The city, just for the record, we have to have it on.
Say what?
Where you live, your city of residence.
Oh, okay. City of Thousand Oaks, myself. Not too far from here. And a proud citizen for decades now. I do represent the Canayo Valley Unified School District, and I wanted to echo much of what Joel said. In fact, Dr. Kirchenstein stole some of my thunder with his comments. But this is a critical piece to the puzzle as we do what we can to best utilize our land and provide for the 21st century learning that these students deserve. So it is part of that process. It's part of the puzzle, and your support and that of the city council will help further that cause. Any questions?
Any questions for our speaker?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next up will be John Freeman. Name and city of residence, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John Freeman, I'm also, live here in the city of Thousand Oaks. We are in escrow with the school district, have been for about a year. This is the first step, getting the property changed from the institutional category, which is, at least from the private sector, very limiting, it's, you know, churches and schools and hospitals, into the industrial category. And we look forward to working with the staff and continuing with the school district to find users and bring forward a project. And I too am available for any questions, but not too much more I can think of at this moment. Thanks.
Any questions for our speaker? Thank you very much. I appreciate it. This is normally the time where we have speakers, public speakers, to come in and give us comments. We have none, other than our applicant. So at this time, we're going to go back to Mr. Specter to see if he has any other staff comments.
I can't think of anything else to add to what's already been provided.
This is typically the time we come back to our applicants and ask if there's any other comments or questions before we close the public hearing. Okay, no? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for commissioners' comments.
Thank you. I think that this is a good plan, the school district. I've been watching for years with your surplus property and the building of the new continuation school on the school district property, even though I will be a neighbor, but that's all right. And with that, I will move approval of LU 2014-70053 and SPA 2014-70148, and the negative declaration that's in our packet. I don't know if there's a number on it. On page four? There, usually I circle that, and I didn't see. Okay, it's a negative, it's 2014-70252.
Any discussion on the motion? Can we call for a vote, please? All those in favor, say aye. Raise your hand.
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
And just as a reminder, this is a recommendation to the city council, therefore there is no appeal process. With that, Mr. Shepherd, community development reports and referrals.
Yes, just to give you an update on applications that'll be brought before you in the near future. Refer to page 45, your planning commission tentative hearing agenda. You'll see we have our next meeting and last meeting to 2014 next week on the 15th. We have three items coming up before the commission. First one is for an indoor sports training facility over on Anchor Court in the Rancho Canayo Industrial Park. Second item is for Starbucks at the Oak Brook Shopping Center over on Avenida de Las Arboles. They're requesting to open one hour earlier than their current approval is for. And then the large item that night will be a modification to an existing tentative track map and a special use permit to modify an approved assisted living facility. They're modifying some of the architectural design of the building and so forth. And then the first meeting of January, January 12th, we have three legislative items coming before you, a general plan land use amendment and two specific plans, all associated with the Thousand Oaks Boulevard, specific plan area, specific plan 20. The general plan amendment is a request to allocate 206 of the, of the Measure E units out of the baseline for allocation within specific plan 20. And then the... E units out of the baseline for allocation within specific plan 20. And then the first specific plan amendment is to, for the distribution of those dwelling units within the specific plan area, and then also refine some of the land use and development requirements within the specific plan guidelines. The second specific plan amendment is to delete the K through 12 schools as a permitted use within the specific plan area. Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
I noticed also that the city council, and it should be December, I don't know why it was December 8th was on this sheet. Anyway, the city council's going to hear the McDonald's on December 16th. But why, because so much of that had to do with the hours, why are we seeing Starbucks before they're doing the McDonald's? I thought that, because I was at the city council meeting I attended, where there was so much discussion from everyone about the hours of what's going on in that whole center. And I thought the whole premise was that they were going to get together and discuss the whole center. And I was just surprised to see that we're going to be looking at hours for one of the businesses there in that center, but then the city council's going to look at the McDonald's. And I'm sure it'll bring into discussion about other hours at that meeting.
Ms. Shearer?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, and Commissioners, good evening. First, let me say that the McDonald's hearing for December 16th is actually going to be changed to January. I will also state, and it is something to state for the record, they have mediated the case pursuant to council's request, and that has been done. They have actually requested a continuance of the hearing for the 16th due to some specific time conflicts that they had. And the other important thing about the McDonald's matter is it was a very specific issue for them. It had to do with the operating hours that the Planning Commission approved for their drive-through, and that was what the appeal was about. And so certainly, the hearing at McDonald's at the city council raised other concerns with the Oakbrook place as a whole. That is either being, well, it's obviously being reviewed and investigated, but through that process, a number of locations are seeking either, either they're going to wait and see what happens, or they're going to go forward with what they think they are important to them. Starbucks, obviously, is, I think, seeking something extended of hours or early hours. At the end, I think we're going to be looking for consistency with whatever is going to be decided. But I think when we have the next hearing, we'll be able to share some of that information that is public, even though it's not in front of the city council at that point, and they haven't approved anything at this point.
Okay, I was just surprised to see it, you know, because it seems like it's going to be piecemealed in all the different times and everything. So, thank you.
And that is a great point, and I think you raised that we've, city staff is certainly concerned about that issue and realize that Planning Commission is, are trying to ensure that they have come up with a decision that's going to not just be followed, but also just lay a good basis for other issues. But again, everyone has their own uses, I think, also, and it's important that we realize that every property owner has their own needs and concerns, and so it might be specifically case-related to that particular property for the reasons of what's there at the time.
Just a follow-up to that. The hearing is actually being, or being requested to be moved to January 13th of 2015.
Now, I want to move to item eight, minutes and resolutions. If I could have a motion to approve the minutes of November 17th, and also a motion to adopt the resolutions from the same date, November 17th.
Mr. Chair, I actually have a question on the contents of the resolution.
Ask away, sir.
On page two, well, actually, page 49 of our packet, page two, the, I guess this would be the minutes for public hearing, PPD 2014-70427. On page 49, down at the bottom, landscaping plan, there's a comment there, says, it's underlined, says, "Prior to submitting a building permit for the proposed addition, et cetera, et cetera." I was recollecting that it was prior to obtaining a building permit as we were going through the discussions, and not submitting, actually, the applicant needs to submit a building permit application, I suppose. He can't really submit a building permit. So I was trying to clarify whether it was upon submitting the permit or actually obtaining a building permit. And again, I was thinking it was the obtaining. Is there some way to verify which direction we ended up going with that? If perhaps I could clarify, I was remembering the applicant was trying to, in essence, buy some time in the process, and in the building process, you can submit a building permit application whereby you submit your building plans for consideration for a building permit. Then you can obtain a building permit, and then you actually build your structure. And I think he was asking for some additional time rather than having to submit his landscaping plans concurrent with the building plan that would give him some additional time to submit the landscape plans at a later date. And without that applicant here to verify his intent, I hate to move forward and require him to submit that, submit with the building permit if that was his request.
Chair and Commissioners, I do not have my notes from the last meeting. I do recall that issue. I believe it is prior to obtaining a building permit, because I do believe he was trying to ensure he had a landscape plan that was going to be reviewed, but he didn't want to submit it prior to, simply because he wanted to ensure he was going to have an okay, I think, before he went forward for it. So I think you are correct. I think it was to obtaining a building permit for the proposed addition. I think that's how we actually ended up doing it at the time. So I think it would be appropriate to change that to prior to obtaining a building permit for the proposed addition, because I think this one, we were making a change to it, I believe.
Okay, that would be consistent with my memory, which is not always 100% accurate.
Correct.
Would that also require a change to a resolution, or would just be the, just the minutes? Actually, also the resolution, item number nine, page 57, would also then need to be changed to prior to obtaining a building permit.
Chair, I believe that would be appropriate to make those changes in these notations at this time, and then make the motion to approve based upon those changes.
Mr. Nichols, I of course will nominate you for approving the minutes and adopting resolutions because of your sharp focus on that. So if you would be so kind to do so?
Absolutely. If I can catch all the numbers here. Let me get back to my notater. Yes, I'd like to move approval of the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of November 17th and the resolutions of November 17th with the recently noted change of condition number nine in both the minutes and the resolution from the word submitting to obtaining a building permit.
Please vote. All those who say aye?
Yes.
Raise your hand.
Motion passed 4-0.
Section 9 AB 1234, reports. This time, any Commissioners have any reports? That would be done. Commissioner comments?
Commissioner Nichols?
Yes, in his absence, I just wanted to thank Mr. Towne for presenting the report on the legacy areas of the city. I have some follow-up questions with that, but I won't impose on Mr. Shepherd for that. I will wait for Mr. Towne to return, give me some chance to kind of ruminate on that a little bit. But I very much appreciate his efforts. And Mr. Shepherd, if you see him before I do, if you could please extend my appreciation. I appreciate that.
Some of my closing comments. I wanted to, first of all, thank all the citizens in Thousand Oaks, Planning Commissioners, staff members for a fantastic year for the 2064 Visioning Project. It just concluded this weekend. Commissioner Reynolds and I were there to see the conclusion of it. Fantastic effort between citizens, professional staff, staff members, ultimately, just the classic example of a community participating in its future. I think the paper reflected that, but actually, as a participant in it, to see it and to experience the different flows of information was fantastic. And it wasn't just one day. It was a good part of this entire year. So I wanted to thank everyone involved for that. Also, as a reminder, State of the City luncheon is tomorrow at Cal Lutheran, so for any of the folks who are watching tonight, to contact the Chamber of Commerce for any additional information or for tickets. And of course, that evening is also the city's annual reorg meeting. So with that, if there's no other comments or questions, we are adjourned to our next meeting, which will be actually next Monday. With that, good night.